Good evening. The town clerk reports that there are 91 elected town meeting members present representing a forum. The special town meeting for the town of Adams is convened. The town clerk will now read the return of the constable.
Adams, Massachusetts, November 21st, 2024. I have served the foregoing warrant by posting in three public places in said town of Adams. True and attested copies thereof, fourteen days at least before time of holding said meeting. Thomas A. Satko, Constable of the Town of Adams.
At this time, I'd like to remind everyone that town meeting members should be seated in the black chairs. All non-town meeting members should be seated either on their right or their left. And I did that backwards, I'm sorry. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is that this is a letter from the United States of America and its republic of which it stands, for my nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
This evening, we will be having standing vote counts, and as tellers, I am appointing David Lennon and Timothy Verdic. We're going to do a little different than we do at the annual town meeting. We're going to take each article one at a time. Anyone who wishes to hold the article, town meeting member wishes to hold the article, will please stand, state their name and their precinct. This is a bylaw amendment, that's Article 1, to replace the accessory building or use definition, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 125-50, Ward Usage and Definitions of the Adams zoning bylaws, to replace the existing definition for accessory building or use. To read as follows, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Accessory building or use: A building or use subordinate or incidental to and located on the same lot with the principal building or use, or an adjacent lot under common ownership. Does anyone wish to hold the article? Seeing that no one wishes to hold the article, Mr. Mesmore of the Finance Committee will vote to recommend that the town vote to accept the article as written, seconded by Mr. Byers. This is a standing vote that requires a two-thirds approval. All those in favor, please stand. And please remain standing until the tellers have reported their numbers to the clerk. Excuse me, the recommendation is made by the Planning Board. Is the chair here from the Planning Board? Mr. Reimeller.
Thank you.
Eighty-eight town meeting members voted yes, one has voted no, the article carries. Article 2, to replace home occupation bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 125-21 Home Occupation of the Adams zoning bylaws, to read as follows, or to take any other action in relation thereto. A, Purpose: It is the intent of this section to allow home businesses within a principal residential or accessory building with reasonable safeguards in all zoning districts. This can involve a vocation, trade, small business, craft, art, or profession, where the nature of the home business is limited in size and scope, and does not create any significant outward impact, which is uncharacteristic of an additional disturbance to a residential neighborhood in which said property is located. B, Home occupations allowable as of right. A home occupation is allowed as of right provided that it is consistent with the below definitions of low-impact customary or professional home occupations, and is limited to no more than one non-resident employee, and the standards listed in 125-21D. Number one, a customary home occupation is generally considered a low-impact use. That includes, but is not limited to, baking, food preserving, home cooking, dressmaking, tailoring, millinery, similar domestic crafts, and... Yes, Mr. Cowie? Certainly. Mr. Cowie moves. Mr. Cowie moves to waive the reading, seconded by Mrs. Zimba. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any discussion on this article? Seeing none, Mr. Reimeller has something he needs to say from the Planning Board?
I'm just here to state that, under this warrant of Article 2, all of this stuff has been reviewed and by the Planning Board, had several meetings in regards to it. Planning Board held a public meeting on the 18th, in accordance to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5, and it was voted in, and that's why it's here today. Thank you.
Mr. Cowie? Sure, go right ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Reimeller. I just have one question. Under home occupations allowable as of right, and then if you go over to the requirements, number nine, it allows for deliveries to be permitted on-site from the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Now, I think under a special permit, that would, my question would be answered, but I want to know, what if I went on a very small street, and it's Saturday night, it's 9:00, and the person has a home occupation allowable as of right, and an 18-wheeler shows up? What happens? Can they do it?
No.
Okay, am I missing?
They have to be scheduled hours for deliveries.
Is there a section that I missed?
No. It is, that, it's, where is it? Correct, it would be allowed.
So, it could be allowed?
Correct.
Is there any way to correct this?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay, because that's the only thing I'm worried about, that somebody's going to, they could have a party going or something, and an 18-wheeler shows up. It may never happen, but it could happen, right?
Well, being a home occupation, it wouldn't have a party.
No, I'm talking about the neighbors.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Are there any other questions? I will entertain a motion to move Article 2 as printed in the warrant. So move by Mr. Byers, seconded by Mr. Vack. Thank you, may be seated. Does anyone wish to vote no? Seeing none. The yes vote is 90, there are no noes. The article passes. Okay, so Article 3 is five pages long, and if there's no objection, we'll waive reading this. Thank you, Mr. Cowie makes a motion, seconded by Mr. Byers, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, so, questions on the storm water management bylaw? This is a new bylaw, Mr. Cowie.
In reading through the bylaw, I note that this is being mandated by the federal government, I believe, and what I want to know is this, do we have a timeline for this, as to when we have to do it by?
Without objection, Mr. Cowie, I'm going to let the Community Development Director answer.
Yes, we are behind in adopting this bylaw.
All right. I mean, we're not in any penalty phase or anything?
We haven't been penalized yet, but we could be by the EPA if we don't adopt it.
Okay, well, here's, here's my question. Under 9318 bylaw, we, under sores, we had a storm drain, storm water bylaw passed in 2008. It was amended, and I think they allowed certain people to hook up to the storm water. Now, I noticed in this statute, give me a minute, under Section 104-17, prohibited activities, illicit connections, no persons shall construct, use, allow, maintain, or continue any illicit connection to the permissible storm drain system, regardless of whether the connection was permissible under applicable prior law. Now, I think that would be 9318. I don't see anything in here that says we're going to repeal 9318. We're just creating a new section. So, is there a problem here? And two, do we know how many people have a permitted use right now, that they're going to have to end the minute we, if we pass this?
The existing connections to the storm water system are only if, if storm, you know, storm water can obviously go into that system. The illicit connections that we're looking for are, like, if somebody has a clothes washer that's connected, or a...
Or a drain from the house to rooftop?
Drain from, those are exempted. So, we're looking for anything that's contributing pollutants to the storm water system, things that should, basically anything other than water.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, has anybody looked into that? Have you looked into, see whether you have permitted users who would be affected by this law? That would be in violation of it.
The town is going to have to do pretty extensive testing of any outfalls, storm water outfalls. That testing process will reveal if there's, like I said, if there's a washer-drier connected, if there's a sewer line that's accidentally connected to the storm water system. So, at the moment, no, we don't have an estimate of who's illegally connected.
Right, and I guess part of my question is related to warrant Article 4, which is coming up, which they want to be allowed to put a lien on. So, you see, I've got these concerns about this. Besides, I don't know. Where did they get the language from?
The language for the bylaw?
Yep.
There's a Central Mass Stormwater Coalition, I think, that helped draft this template language, and that's what we've been basing the bylaw off of.
Was this designed specifically for small towns such as Adams?
It was developed specifically to meet Massachusetts regulations.
Well, that could meet cities like Boston, Pittsfield, Springfield. You don't, you know whether or not, this, what we have here in front of us, was designed for the town of Adams? And the problems that we have?
It's a template that's, that many different communities have adopted, including Cheshire, who I think adopted a similar bylaw at their last town meeting.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions on this bylaw?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Novak, certainly go ahead.
A comment, is this on? Can everybody hear me? There we go. My concern about this bylaw is, as Mr. Cowie mentioned, this is a template, this was almost exact as Pittsfield's, and I feel that within the context of that bylaw, that the Conservation Commission, although it's home rule, and it was given over to the Planning Board to oversee it, I feel that the Conservation Commission will be contacted if there's anything within the bylaw that is affected by the wetlands regulation. And one thing that I think needs to be looked at, Section 26 in the zoning of Pittsfield has a part under it for exemptions for agricultural use, and that wasn't incorporated in our bylaw. There's a part which is called soil disturbance, and that could be something as half an acre, which is approximately 20,000 by 20,000 square feet, of land that is disturbed. I look at a farm who plants winter wheat, and in the summer, they go and disturb the soil by harrowing that under. And so, I believe that within the context of this bylaw, that there should be a part that has agricultural exemptions within it. And secondly, the water that enters into our streams, and I use where I live for example, there's a direct inflow into the river, and salt is detrimental to the ecology, to water ecology, and it constantly goes right into the stream. There's nothing stopping it. There's no catch basin where some of the pollutants could be, maybe taken out through siltation within a basin, and I think that that's something that really needs to be looked at in this community. We have a number of such direct infalls into the, into our river systems. And I'd also like to thank Eamon, he's one of the few people that, when I write to him, he gets back to me, and I want to thank him for that. And those are more comments, rather than not going for the bylaw, because it, as it was mentioned, it needs to be incorporated.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Corrigan?
Yeah, I just got a quick question.
Name and precinct.
Precinct 3. On pollutants, and it lists a whole bunch of pollutants, it all makes sense, except for J, rock, sand, salt, and soil. What does that do for highway maintenance in the wintertime? If we're going to consider, if these things banned from storm water runoff, are we saying we can't sand and salt the street?
That is not the intent of the bylaw. That is definitely not the intent of the bylaw.
Okay, but it doesn't, it just lists these pollutants, but it doesn't give an exception to sand, salt, and soil.
Can you, which section or which page are you on?
I'm looking at Pollutants J.
Well, right, but simply because that's listed as a pollutant, doesn't mean we would prohibit our highway department?
Well, I guess, I guess my question is, and it makes sense you wouldn't put, staff it, but you certainly would staff everything else on that list. You certainly wouldn't want to put animal waste down the storm sewers, or oil, or whatever, but by definition, you're going to put salt, sand, down the storm sewer.
Yeah.
So, shouldn't that be struck?
I don't feel like it needs to be, because it's addressed through other activities that the DPW does, to help meet the requirements of our EPA.
But according, according to this law, it says you can't do it.
It just calls it a pollutant, it doesn't say you can't, it doesn't say that our highway department can't salt roads.
No, but it, it does imply I can't put animal waste, and I can't put everything else down that storm sewer. Why can't I put salt and sand down there? I can't put the rest down there, I can't put sand and salt down. So, shouldn't we strike that out of that, this article?
Mr. Lennon? Yep, go to the microphone. And then I have a lady over here.
David Lennon, Precinct 5. That Section 104-5, under waivers, the storm water authority, which is Adams and the Planning Board, is allowed by federal, state, and local statutes or regulations, where the action is acceptable. And obviously, salting and sanding of the roads is acceptable, and it says it there under, again, 104-5.
Wouldn't it be better just to...
Mr. Corrigan, you've got to stand up. Come on up. I have my hand raised up.
Wouldn't, would it be a lot cleaner just to delete sand, salt, and soil from this whole thing and be done with it?
Okay, Mr. Corrigan, hold on. Eamon, I'm going to let this, I can't see who you are. Rachel?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Corrie, case precinct 3, and I think that someone's mentioned on the waiver section, that can be waived for the point, for the purpose of snow plowing and care of the roads. Do you see that's on 104-5, waivers?
Mm-hmm.
Number two. So, if that helps, I think it means common sense and it's a use, but then I'll bring up another issue, and that is the issue of animal waste near streams. I don't see that addressed here. The E. coli issues.
Thank you.
Well, to quickly address animal waste, there is a section about pet waste, which, as it turns out, is a major contributor of E. coli to streams. So, there is a section that prohibits anybody from putting pet waste into a, into a storm drain.
I was thinking of, and I'm a believer in farms, I love farms, but the farm, is that a thing? I have to go there. Okay.
I want to say that I love farms, and I live in an agricultural area, but I wonder if we've looked into the issue of large livestock. I, I, I don't know, it's a big one, I think.
I think, as folks have pointed out, so, for this bylaw, the Planning Board has been looked at as, as being the storm water authority, and so, I think some of these issues could be taken up with them as we start to implement the bylaw, and some of these concerns about agricultural exemptions for agriculture could be brought up, and that could be incorporated into the regulations that the Board will have to adopt after this bylaw is approved.
I see, so the Planning Board, not the zoning, zoning Board?
Yeah, as the bylaw's written, the Planning Board would be the storm water authority for the town.
I'd like to ask the deputy staff meeting. Okay?
Is there anyone else, Mrs. Zimba? And I do see you in the back.
Okay, back to the, it would be, let me see, on the pollutants, and it would be number E, pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers. Now, just think, everybody fertilizes their lawn, rainstorm comes, it goes in the, in the gutter system, so, that's really kind of ridiculous, and also, to get back to farming, I'm in a farm family, you can't fertilize your, use any pesticides or herbicides, because a rainstorm might come and wash you down the road. This is just kind of, I don't know if there's an answer to it, because you could say, nobody can fertilize their lawn anymore, because it's going to rain and get in the system. I mean, everything's going to get in the system, you can't stop it. So, that's just my comment, especially with farms, too, because of it. You know, the government's in on it, too, and you can't have your cows cross the river because they might, you know, mess it, and it's getting so, it's too hard to farm anymore. You have to build walls around your river, you know, so they don't get in it, 100 feet away from the river. It's crazy. That's it.
Well, let me just, as I said before, the intent of bylaws not to punish homeowners for fertilizing their lawn, it's not to punish any, you know, farmer for putting manure on their fields. It's really, I guess, let me provide two examples about how this bylaw would work. The first is, the EPA wants us to be more strict about how we maintain our storm water sewer system, and about what, about what's going into it. They, the biggest concern is basically broken infrastructure, so, if there's broken storm water pipes, that we're fixing them so that sand and silt aren't washing into them, and filling up catch basins on a regular basis. And again, about those illicit connections, so, what the EPA calls illicit connections, so, like I said, folks that have a washer, or a sewer pipe, or something that's accidentally connected to the sewer system. So, what the bylaw would allow us to do is, or prohibits those specific things, and would allow us to, you know, if a homeowner or resident isn't addressing that, that issue, it would allow us to find them, or whatnot, if we really had to, or if the town really had to. The other half of the bylaw is about new, is about new construction, and so, it's about, and so, about land disturbance. So, if a, you know, a new business or something is coming into town, you know, going to be building on a new site, if they disturb a certain amount of land, that would trigger the need for a storm, storm water permit that would be granted by the Planning Board. So, anything over a half an acre or an acre of land disturbance would trigger that requirement, that they come to the Board and possibly install a rain garden, or a, you know, a new storm water detention basin, or something like that, as part of that new construction.
Yeah, and as far as farming goes, to the other lady who said, you know, they disturb it in the spring, and they disturb it in fall, well, people have gardens, if you don't, you have, I don't know how many hundreds of... you don't, you, you, you have, I don't know how many hundreds of acres that are disturbed. It's six inches deep, you know? I, it's, you know, that's impossible.
The language in the bylaw about that land disturbance, though, is specifically about its connection to new development or redevelopment. It's not, the intent is not to punish farmers.
Okay, thank you.
Was it Ms. Hines in the back?
Um, hi. Kathy Hines, precinct five. My only thing is, in conjunction to some of the concerns that people were voicing about, like the animal waste and some of the pollutants, it might be advantageous for maybe the water department to work in conjunction with the Board of Health if there's concerns about some of the pollutants that could be disease, um, disease oriented, like people, somebody mentioned E. coli. So maybe that's something that could be addressed between the Board of Health and the water department, how we address something like that and how they test it. And then the public can be informed through a newsletter that the water department puts out or a column that I'm going to be writing with, for the Board of Health. And then people will be informed that it's nothing to be that concerned about. And there are ways that people can test for those type of diseases as well. Okay, and I think we should be more concerned, not so much about the farms with their fertilizer and their large animals. I think we need to be more concerned about the people that leave their poop on the street that's going everywhere. But that's just my opinion.
Um, also to, to address some of these concerns, um, you know, I know this, this bylaw is large, it's over five pages. The Planning Board, after, if, if this is adopted tonight, we also have a draft set of regulations that the Planning Board will need to adopt that will help to guide implementation and I think can clarify a lot of these concerns. Um, and so the board will need to begin work on that shortly after this is adopted. Uh, any new regulations have to be adopted after a public hearing, so the board, you know, Planning Board will hold a public hearing on those regulations and they can take comments and I think address a lot of these things that folks have brought up.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes. Mr. Demastery.
Good evening. Paul Demastery, precinct four. One thought that I had in reading this is that the incoming administration, um, had no problem stating that they were going to be revising EPA laws, uh, OSHA, any kind of safety to protect us. I wonder if we could wait and see what kind of regulations are going to be inputted or, or removed or changed before we implement this.
Aman?
Um, yeah, I mean, I've, I've also heard that the incoming Trump administration might roll back environmental regulations. I mean, at this moment, we're still required to, by the EPA, to approve the bylaw and we are about a year behind schedule. I'll just say that.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Um, a motion is in order to move Article Three as printed in the warrant. Moved by Mr. Mack, seconded by Mr. Byrus. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we're going to stand up. It's a simple majority vote. All in favor, please stand, and the tellers will please count. Thank you, may be seated. Those voting no, please stand. The vote count is eight yes, and a no, the article carries. Article four, it's a short one. To see if the town will vote pursuant to general laws, chapter forty, section fifty-eight, to impose as municipal charges lien, a lien on real property for costs incurred by the town to perform remediation of stormwater permit violations or to do anything relative thereto. Questions? Comments? Seeing none, a motion is in order to move the article as printed. Mr. Byrus, seconded by Mr. Burdick, all in favor? Opposed? So moved. Article five, our special articles. Article five is the memorial school redevelopment authorization of the Board of Selectmen to finalize sale and disposition of property and enter into a long-term leaseback agreement. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the board, commission, or officer currently having care, custody, management, and control of real property and improvements thereof, being a portion of the former memorial school property shown as lot two, two hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty plus or minus square feet, or five point one five seven acres, on an approval not required survey plan prepared by Hill Engineers Architect Planners of Adams, Mass., dated October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, referenced as the plan. As may be amended, on file with the town clerk to the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of sale and disposition to Michael T. Mackin, sole proprietor or his nominee, on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems to be in the best interest of the town, including granting and accepting temporary or permanent easements over portions thereof. And two, to authorize the town to enter into a lease or other form of agreement after said sale and disposition for a portion of twenty years. Whoops. Or a portion of said property as shown on the plan for general and municipal purposes for a term of twenty years, including the town's option to extend said lease with any revisions thereto for two additional terms of ten years each at the Board of Selectmen's discretion. All on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems to be in the best interest of the town and as may be necessary or appropriate. And three, to apply for any grants or other sources of funding as may be available to the town and to receive and expend any such grant funds in connection with the project described herein or take any other action in relation thereto. Okay? Any questions? Sure, I can see. Come on up.
Hello, I'm Chad Morley, precinct three. Um, this is kind of a, maybe a small thing, but, uh, a lot of this says, uh, what the Board of Selectmen deem to be best interest of the town. I have faith in the Board of Selectmen. I personally, uh, just would like some sort of assurance that we're going to get continuation of the walking, biking, wheelchair path up to the field. I think that that would be excellent. I think it's in the plan, but, um, I think the view from the field overlooking the stacks, the train, the river, the churches is one of the best views in town. It would be excellent if we could get some sort of assurance, maybe in writing, that we could get a continuation of the, the path already exits, like Asher-Melticup, goes through the World War One park, cross the street. Be wonderful if there's a little cross back path up to the field.
Okay, thank you. So it's been brought to my attention. Um, I need a motion to prove the article and a second, and then we'll continue with discussion.
Oh, sorry.
No, that was my fault. So, motion by Ms. Tomkowitz, seconded by Sarah Klein in the back. All in, and now discussion. I was ready to go right ahead. Aman or John?
Uh, I will say, we, you know, we've been speaking with a developer quite frequently about this project, obviously, and been negotiating with him on the development agreement. Um, he's definitely supportive of the community use of the property, um, so we'll definitely take up that issue with him and potentially, you know, a permanent easement or something could be granted to the town to preserve that walking path.
So, um, my understanding is one of the purposes here as a town meeting is that, um, instead of leaving things just up to the Board of Selectmen, we can make additions, amendments, and put our, some of our own restrictions on these things as a town meeting? Sorry, I'm not a lawyer. I...
Question. If you do want to amend the article, your amendment should be in writing. If you have your amendment in writing and then you can put a motion to amend, we'll call for a second, then we'll vote on the amendment. If it passes, then article amended. Otherwise, we go back to the original article. So do you want to make an amendment?
Uh, yeah, I guess I don't know necessarily the best way to put it into English because I, again, I don't have training in legal English, so maybe, I guess I can just give up at this point, but...
Somebody, kid, we can, we can get your article, your amendment, I'm sorry. So if you want to amend, take a few minutes, then come back up with your amendment in writing and we'll take it from there.
Okay.
Okay, in the meantime, somebody answering your question?
Well, I'll start. I'll just add to what Aman had to, uh, say is that Mr. Mackin is in need of parking, um, for this building, for the twenty-four apartments, correct? Twenty-five, twenty-five apartments. So, uh, what he's planned, plans on doing is using the back of this building, um, but there's not enough room. You can drive through the back of this building. But he's going to have to build a retaining wall. He's going to have to dig out some of that, um, land, build a retaining wall, and then be able to park cars there and then for, for cars to be able to move back and forth behind this building. So I still think, I, I like the idea. I'd like to keep that. And, uh, we spent many years of, gee, all right, doing that and walking that darn thing. But I, I think it's still something that we'd like to keep and, and if we can, Mr. Mackin would be in support of that. He's been very supportive with us. So, yeah, definitely, the, uh, the amendment sounds pretty good so far. It's agreed. A few more, a few more questions next?
Craig Corrigan, precinct three. I have a question on the long-term lease. Who is going to be responsible for renovations and maintenance on the portion of the building that we lease?
The town is responsible for the utilities and maintenance of, um, this community center, which includes this gym, the boys' and girls' locker room, the, um, administration offices down to the end, which, um, is next to the auditorium, the auditorium itself, um, in this hallway in front of us. This whole area would be the Adams Community Center.
All right. What concerns me is going back twenty years. When the school left here, one of the big concerns a school had was the back wall at the gym, that it would bode. And they, that, when they came to the finance committee, they had to have these kids out of here. That's what we were told. A year later, they put kids back in, for a year. But we were told they had to, they had to redo the high school because this school was so bad. And one of the things I remember is that back wall. And that was an offensive proposition back in the day. If we take this lease, are we going to be responsible for fixing that back wall?
The, the, when you say back wall, you mean the, um, hill? Or this, this wall here where you see a crack up in the corner?
No, no, the, the back wall, outside wall.
Okay.
Uh, they say, I haven't looked at it in a long time, they say there's a bode in that wall, that the veneer is boded out. I don't know that to be a fact, but that's what the school told us twenty years ago.
Yeah, it, for a little history, we did, our plan was, we had a building committee for this building years ago, right? Um, many years ago. And the plan was to renovate this building and put an addition. And this building is built to have a second floor, to add another floor to the classroom wing. So that was our plan. Uh, look, you see a crack like this, people say, oh my God, the, the corner is going to come apart. But we, we brought in experts and they did borings of the wall outside also. And they also checked this crack in the, uh, corner here and there, there was no issue. Uh, the response that we got back. But again, that's twenty, twenty-five years ago. I was part of that, um, but, uh, I don't have anything, or remember any, um, issues from that time. We'd have to bring that back up. But if it's, if it's a wall that's boding, this is Mr. Mackin's building.
I guess my concern is before you enter into any agreement, are you going to take a, a look at this, uh, structure and the building and what we're getting ourselves into?
I would say, yes, we have been. We had the roof replaced, which was in terrible shape, um, which was eight hundred thousand, or I said, six hundred thousand, grant that we received. Um, we also had heating system put in, um, all these areas except for the auditorium, um, which was, um, forget the total amount for that. So we have been investing to improve this, uh, and we had new lights put in the end of the day. When you put the lights on, it took fifteen minutes to come on. Um, those have all been moved and replaced. Um, so we have been investing in the issues that, in the, in the heating system and all that. We have been investing money through grants, um, to bring this up, to upgrade this facility, for the community center, not the classroom wing.
Uh, Ms. Parsons? And then Mr. Cowie, it'll be you, actor.
Diane Parsons, precinct one. I wanted to say in advance that when I read about this, um, the purchase of this building for, um, for housing or apartments, and that finally it was going to be available to the senior center, I was delighted. I think it's a wonderful use for this building. And that you were going to be able to lease it back, I was, I thought it was wonderful. But then I heard that, and I think you, um, um, confirmed that. The lease, you, you started negotiating and it might be fifty thousand a year, um, that the town would be paying for rent back. And that seemed very high to me. And over twenty years, and a twenty-year lease, that is a million dollars. And you said they probably are making improvements upward of a million or a million and a half. It sounds like a loan to the town, uh, for them to be making those improvements.
Okay. Uh, so the, uh, the deal currently is that the first year, there is no rent, uh, for twenty years at least. The second year is, um, uh, half, which would be twenty-five thousand. And then the third year through the twentieth year would be fifty thousand. The agreement that we've been working with him is that when the town receives a grant that will approve this facility, that that, uh, the rats, uh, or the lease payment will be reduced. And we just received a three hundred thousand dollar, three hundred and thirty thousand dollar, uh, grant, uh, which we are going to bring forward to him and say it's time to reduce the, uh, uh, lease payments again. So that was, that was a baseline that we started at, and now we're starting to chip away at that baseline. Um, so it's...
Yeah. I'm not a terrific numbers person, but that seems like a lot to me. And the other question that I had had to do with, what will the building be assessed at? What will the new owner be paying, um, property taxes on?
Good question.
We had a, uh, discussed with the assessor this morning, the current assessed value of this building and the property is seven...
The current assessed value of this building and the property is $7.2 million. So that Mr. Mackin, as the new owner, would be responsible for, you know, obviously paying the taxes on that $7.2 million. We estimate new revenue from the sale, or new tax revenue from the sale of the building would be somewhere between $120,000 and $170,000 to the town. And that's just, that's based on just that, a current value of $7.2 million. The total value of the, total estimate of the redevelopment project would be $13 million. So that's only gonna increase that assessed value after a few years and after the project's completed.
So there wouldn't be a substantial amount of money coming back in property taxes?
Yes.
Okay. I wondered whether they would be paying on the 70 million or, or the 7 million or the amount they were paying.
The nuance of this is that immediately after the sale, basically, the tax value goes down to that, the sale price is $50,000.
So one year, they'll be paying?
For one year, they will pay taxes based on $50,000. In FY '27, so that's July of 2026, the full assessed value would kick in, that $7.2 million, and the tax bill would go up based on that full value.
Thank you.
Mr. Cowie and then Ms. Case.
Mr. Duvall, in here it says, you know, that you're working on the development agreement, purchase and sale, and other agreements. I know you're probably reluctant to go into the other agreements, but is it, has he asked for a special tax agreement from the town whereby the taxes would be reduced?
He has not.
Okay.
Ms. Case? Ms. Case, then Mr. Summer.
And Mr. Ward, you're gonna have your amendment in a minute? Okay, I'll get to you.
Thank you. Corrine Case, precinct three. Are you even wondering if the town leases any other building? Do we have any other leases in town for town use?
I don't think we even have any buildings that we lease. With the move of the council on aging moving to here, and again, this building is not paying any real estate taxes, owned by the town. When we sell it, we don't have real estate taxes.
On the portion that is developed for the buyer?
As Aiman just explained too. But the, now that we leave the visitor's center, which again, under town ownership, we're not receiving any taxes for it or any lease for it. So that's what we will look for next after this is all, the council on aging moves in, they're settled, and then we'll look at that building and see what we can do there to be able to generate taxes or lease.
This kind of reminds me of, do you buy the car outright or do you lease a car? But here's my real question, here's the big one. Did folks look at making a condominium, creating an association where the town can own a portion of the property, and the new buyer could own the rest?
Yes, that was the intent. When, as the town's been trying to redevelop the building, we always assumed that there would be a condominium-type arrangement with the new, with the new, you know, that we would split the building basically in two. Developer would take over the classroom wing, and the town would retain the administrative wing. However, you know, even though the town planned for that for a long time, Mr. Mackin, the developer, with his financing, he's basically told us that he needs to have the, he needs the full equity, the full value of the building for his finances. So the condominium-type arrangement doesn't work.
I'm not an attorney, I'm a paralegal, but it just seems like that would be a cleaner deal and a more fair deal. And I know there are legal costs in creating that kind of association, but I just don't like the idea of giving away a nice, beautiful location of a building and then having to pay rent for it. It just doesn't sit well with me. So I'm just bringing it up. I guess the deal is done, is that right? The deal's done?
Well, no, it's up to town meeting.
Yeah.
Well, has been taken, yeah. But going back again, back after the high school had left here, I think we were here for a year, whatever it was, for the high school to be renovated. Ever since then, Donna Seazin, when she was acting town administrator, myself, Rick Blanchard, the subcommittee, what my main focus was, at that time, we were told that the Plumbus School would be closed in 10 years because of the lack of student, the population and the student decline, which has not come to fruition. So at that time, we said, well, we're gonna lose our only gym we have in town, right? Because this one wasn't operating. So my main goal is to bring this gym back to life and have PAL games again, practices, adult leagues like we used to have, and be able to use this gym itself as part of it. So, yeah, and one more thing about the lease is that Mr. Mackin is going to invest a million, over a million dollars to replace all the windows in this building. And we all know that those windows, the Bandy assisted building was built from 1950s. So all the windows that are included with the council on aging area, our community center area, will be replaced, brand new windows. He's also, I think I mentioned, he's gonna do a room down there for the council on aging, totally do it over. So it comes to a bottom, and also to the bathrooms over here, so we can open for the youth leagues and have open gym, whatever you might want to have here. So he's investing as part of that formula with the lease and everything else we just talked about a few minutes ago, that Mr. Mackin's going to invest a million dollars. He's already provided $10,000.
Thank you.
You, Mr. Summer.
Couple of questions. One, why do we need to...
Name and precinct, please.
What's that?
Name and precinct, please.
Oh, Donald Summer, four. Why do we need to acquire or pay a lease on the auditorium? Now, when we now have finally the Adams Theater, we have a theater there, what are we gonna use that for?
The original intention was that it will be used for town meeting as one of its sources.
I hope we're not gonna maintain and put a lease on a piece of property that we're gonna use for two town meetings here.
Yeah, same with this, we'll be still using this for voting, same as currently. But that's, that's the plan, is to keep that in the town's hands. At some point, if we feel we need to work a deal with Mr. Mackin and provide that back to him, he'll fill that with apartments.
Well, at the information meeting that was held at the senior center, the executive director said that there were some pros and cons of moving the senior citizen up here. And one of the pros was, they needed more space, and they're renting out one or two offices, I understand. Why couldn't they just not rent those offices out? I think one is the veterans' agent, I mean, he could certainly, he's only here one day a week. Why wouldn't that be sufficient?
If I get your question correctly, that the second floor, that we should be able to lease the entire second floor. We do have a couple of offices up there, the veterans' agent, and...
So your plan is to do what with the visitor's center?
The plan is to most likely, I can't speak for the board, we haven't talked about it yet, but RFP, see what we can get, get in on tax rolls, hopefully keep the visitor's center.
No real plan?
We haven't talked about it yet, because this plan hasn't been approved yet. So as soon as this is approved, we'll move on to the next one.
If I may, I'd like to amend the most, the article. I'd like to amend it by striking out the word "after" and substitute "prior to said sale and approval by town meeting."
Do you have that in the articles for summer?
I scratched it out here. Sorry, I didn't do this earlier.
Thank you.
Show me where, in the article. Show me where you want it. We're here.
Mr. Summer, just getting back to your question while we're looking at the amendment, the auditorium, we have had inquiries in regards to theater groups using the stage. Stage was redone prior to this building closing, the stage was, the stage floors redone, it's in pretty good shape. So we have had inquiries for local groups to be able to use that facility. So really, again, a community center, a use by the community.
If I may respond, that's all well and good, but I think in order for the town to really understand what we're doing, I would think that the select board would come back with something more specific, rather than have us enter into this agreement and end up paying a lease on this gymnasium and an auditorium. I don't know how much the gymnasium's gonna be used and the auditorium, and there's an awful lot of upkeep to those two presses, as well as the lease cost.
Mr. Summer, can I ask for clarification on your amendment? Where you say "after" and "substituting" part or two, "said sale"?
It's about, it's line one.
No, you've got that part.
I got that. So you wanted to read number two, to authorize the town to enter into a lease or other form of agreement prior to said sale and disposition?
And approval by a town meeting.
So you wanted to come back to town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Summer has put forward the following motion for this following, on article five. We're starting with number two, in about the middle of the article, to authorize, he would like the language to read, to authorize the town to enter into a lease or other form of agreement prior to said sale and disposition, and then approval by town meeting. Correct? Is there a second to that? Seconded by Mr. Cowie. Discussion.
Mr. Mackin has been butting at the bit, if I may say, to get started on this building. He's been waiting very patiently. We had hoped that the decision would be made this evening, that the town meeting would make the decision. Due to going back and forth with legal, with lawyers and from each side, we just couldn't get ready tonight to actually have town meeting make that decision. So we're hoping that you give the authority over to the select board and continue to negotiate. My concern is that if Mr. Mackin, you know, he's been frustrated that we're not ready yet, and it continues on for months, he says we may lose the only individual, only entity that is going to do an upgrade to this building. This is it, there's no more, nothing else is gonna happen here unless Mr. Mackin has given the go-ahead. So we have 25, we gotta think of the big picture, that we have 25 brand-new apartments on, 25 in the downtown, as I say, I consider starts around Angelina's and going south, that we have someone who's ready to do that, ready to start, I was gonna say tomorrow, but many weeks ago, months ago, and he's going to invest a million dollars, put in the bathrooms so our youth of the community can use this building like they used to. My kids did, and your kids did, and now it's closed. And we can't, using Plumbus Gym, we don't have much access to, so everybody has it up to check, right? So it's nice to have our own facility, our own community center, like most communities do, again, and their communities, they have community centers, we don't. This will be our community center, so, and if there's a change in the economy, which may come our way come spring, we don't know, that will the recession or the economy going in a turn that concerns us to have Mr. Mackin make back out of this. So when we go through these projects tonight, there's no one else, there's no other plan. He's the guy, he's got the money, ready to go, and I'd like to support him, and let's get moving on this progress here, so we can get taxes, be better at this building. I don't want to lose this opportunity. It's only reasonable. I answered your questions, heard your questions, and we, and the board can still negotiate those before we make the finals, we sign off, but let's not lose this opportunity. That's it, this is our only chance.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the amendment. Any further discussion, Ms. Hines? On the amendment only. Discussion for the amendment? Not on the amendment?
Not on specific, well, it has to do with what we're talking about.
I can't, I can't hear you.
I just have a general question.
So right now, we're talking about the amendment, so the discussion is gonna be strictly to the amendment right now. We won't get back to the article after, okay?
Got it.
All right. Discussion on the amendment, Mr. Ketchum.
William Ketchum, precinct two. Look, I do not understand how this amendment is changing what we were originally voting on. You're saying that it's still going to approve the sale and disposition, except that prior to it, it comes back to town meeting? So town meeting can do what at that point if we've already approved the sale and disposition? I don't understand what the event is intended to do.
Mr. Summer, the intent?
Well, the intent is simple, it's just that I would think the town meeting would want to know all the specifics on what we're going to pay specifically, and at least some reasonable estimates on what the upkeep, the utilities are gonna cost the town on a yearly basis to operate this.
Mr. Duvall?
All right, so as of today, we budget for this building $116,300. We did that in the last, the current fiscal year. That is to pay for heat, the majority of it's paid for heat. And we have to do that. In order to keep this building and have insurance on it, we need to have this building heated to 32 degrees, and that's where that money goes, okay? So when we sell this building, we're not gonna have that cost, however, so that cost goes away plus having to heat the classroom wing, to keep this building viable, for someone to come in and want to buy, and for us to still use it for these type of events. But, so that's, cost is going away. The cost we will now incur, which means someone have now, not much, is utilities, which we do not know what they're going to be for a monthly basis. We have to, a few months before we have that information. For water, a bill, not sure, we'll find out when we have the council on aging here, don't know yet. So those are type of things we will find out over time, it's gonna take several months before we get a good idea of how much that's gonna cost us. We don't believe it's gonna be more than half of this, but we'll see how it works out. So we're gonna pay, so just no increase to the taxpayer from the budget that we currently have for this building, if we sell this building and have this community center leased out, no change, no additional payment in taxes in regards to this lease agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Laura. And again, Mr. Laura, to the amendment. Thank you.
Don't want to waste anybody's time. Fred Laura, precinct one. If I understand the amendment, to authorize the town to enter into a lease or other form of agreement prior to the sale and disposition, am I correct?
Yes.
So the challenge is that you're asking Mr. Mackin to try to enter into a lease agreement with the town of Adams before he owns the property. And if I wanted to do an analogy, how can you rent an apartment to someone unless you rent the only apartment in the first place? So I think from a legal perspective, that puts a challenge on, again, the only viable option we have for this building at this time, right? You know, Larry Bird's not gonna walk in that building and help win the game, right? This is... This is a Town of Adams, Mr. Mackin deal, and my concern is attempting to negotiate a lease in writing prior to the sale could disrupt the whole, you know, the process that has been negotiated visionally for years, right, years. I believe that the town selectmen have the ability to come back to the town in various meetings and other formats and discuss your negotiations for the best lease possible, for the best terms for the Town of Adams, right? We voted you, ladies and gentlemen, to have that authority, right? We delegated that authority to negotiate this lease after the sale, not prior to the sale. So I guess that's a question and a statement at the same time. But, you know, again, my concern is, is that how are you going to negotiate a lease until the man owns the property in the first place?
Okay, thank you.
Just quickly, yes, we have negotiated up to this point, and we still have a little more time to make some final decisions, but there's not a lot of time, so I urge a vote of no on this amendment.
Mr. Vassling, have something?
I know you are, I have no doubt.
Isn't it great we can talk? And the Town of Adams can be listened to, and we can listen to each other, tell each other where to go. And then when we're done, shake our hands and continue on. We're not letting anyone else do it for us, we're doing it. I congratulate you.
Thank you. To the amendment, there is a motion and a second to amend the article. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The amendment fails when we return to the article as written. Mr. Worley?
Sure. I'm sorry, this is wasting time. Uh, okay, so, I, Chad Worley, precinct three, I have an amendment.
Just for the amendment?
Okay, and so, right before the two, says temporary or permanent easements over portions thereof, and to require that the developer create an accessible path from Columbia Street to Soldier's Memorial Field through the memorial school property, convenient for wheelchairs, bicycles, and pedestrians.
Okay, Mr. Worley would like to amend the article to read, right before you get to the number two, in the middle of the article. He's put forward a motion to amend it to require that the developer create an accessible path from Columbia Street to Soldier's Memorial Field through the memorial school property, convenient for wheelchairs, bicycles, pedestrians, et cetera. Is there a second to the amendment? Seconded by Mr. Terrosi. Discussion, Mr. Duval.
I think the amendment is a good thing. I have a grandson who lives over there and want him to use that path. But I don't want to hold Mr. Mackin to having to invest money into having it, which we may do, but put him on, you know, record as having to do certain things to that walkway. He still hasn't, you know, until it gets started, and the board will push to have that walkway to stay there, because I like it to have it stay there too. But I don't want to tie Mr. Mackin to, when wheelchairs are mentioned, and you get into ADA requirements, and if we keep it, we may have to, I don't know. But I just don't want to tie Mr. Mackin to anything that we haven't even discussed with him yet.
Yeah, I'd like to ask, I can't visualize, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Joe. And to do that, it would, we would have to have an engineer to study that, to make this amendment to happen, so it would, it would cost probably, it would cost us to have an engineer come in and take a look at that, right? Yeah, so.
Mr. Novak.
Yeah, I'm just having a hard time visualizing where this path would be located. I just can't visualize it in my mind if it could be explained to me where it goes. I'd like to hear it.
Mr. Duval.
So, Joe, back in the day, you were on the high school basketball team here. I'm not sure if you, as we did at junior high, there's a path that would lead you up to the field above us, that goes like this. I think that's the path we're talking about, I'm wrong, let me know, but there's a path. Oh, okay, you guys can see it, but, so the path is there, and it gets you up to the top of the hill, to the, where the field used to be used by the high school, by the junior high, we said junior high baseball games at, during the time that the school was open. So if that can still be there, that's great, the way it is, but any change to that, or any upgrade to that path is going to, is going to be a change, and it's going to be a cost to the town.
Thank you, Mrs. Case. And Mrs. Case, this is on the amendment, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Green Place, precinct three. Why would it be a cost to the town when the builder would be making that improvement?
Well, if we get into that, prior to, I would imagine, prior to the sale, that we would have to have an engineering study on that. If we were forced to have it done, he, that's not part of his plan, he's not going to do that. But if we suggest, or urge that we have this path made, ADA accessible, and we have to have an engineering study done to see if it's feasible, and then if we, then we'd have to have negotiations with Mr. Mackin for him to pay for it. We wouldn't pay for the actual installation of this path, the improvement of it, but we would have to take care of, I would imagine, an engineering study to make sure that it's feasible. I just don't think at this point in time that's worth doing this. And if the path can survive, that's great, people can use it, like you've always have, but at doing anything additional to it, it's just going to cost more money on the town side, and he may not, he may not agree to it.
Didn't you mention that you'll have parking back, in the backyard?
Well, they have parking, right, there's something, come back into the hill a bit to get some spots.
Right, and he's already done the planning and expenses for that.
He's willing to do that, yes, he's agreed to it. And he needs that.
He is working in that area?
Yes, the retaining wall is going to build.
Well, I, and still in favor of the motion, except one little thing, and that is et cetera. That's not good English, just leave it at et cetera, right? So I recommend that it, say, for pedestrian use, wheelchairs, motorized vehicles, well, I'd better not say that, but, you know, the scooters. So I'd like to drop the et cetera.
I would, just the last thing I'll say is, I would, again, recommend this be voted down, that if it can stay, and the parking, the retaining wall doesn't impact it, it's safe, that's great, but trying to do this and add, and the engineering studies adding costs, and he may not agree to it, I think we're at a point, it's kind of late for that.
Mr. Worley, do you have objection to removing et cetera? Thank you. Without objection, stricken. Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second with respect to the amendment, Mrs. Mucci.
Erin Mucci, precinct one. I want to commend Mr. Worley for this amendment, because it's definitely something we would all love to see, but at the same time, I don't think that the language should be put into the article because of the impact that it could have on the Board of Selectmen's ability to negotiate the sale and the lease agreement coming up. It sounds like Mr. Mackin has been very agreeable and good to work with, and so I think if the Board of Selectmen is able to express our concerns, that that path remain, I would like to leave it up to the Board of Selectmen's purview.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none. All in favor of amending Article Five to include the language and to require that the developer create an accessible path from Columbia Street to Soldier's Memorial Field through the memorial school property, convenient for wheelchair, bicycles, and pedestrians? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. Returning back to the article as written, any further discussion on the article? Okay, Mr. Wagner? Yes, I remember. So it's going to be Mr. Wagner, then, who was over here? Mr. Ketchum, and then it'll be Ms. Hines in the back.
Peter Wagner, precinct three. This town needs more housing, needs more properties on the tax roll. My question is, is this planned development to turn this into housing viable? Just looking at the number of apartments that are planned and the developer's expected expenditure, I'm concerned that it's not viable, which then raises a question about, we get enough the rolls, but then the town will be leasing land from someone who has a not economically viable business? So I guess my question is, is the developer's plan economically viable for the developer?
Mr. Duval.
So the developer wouldn't be doing this if they didn't feel that it was viable. They wouldn't get into this at all, right? Unless they could make money. We all know on the housing issue, housing crunch, the issues we have throughout the state of Massachusetts. So, and we, and I'll mention that on Park Street, you may have heard me say this, but we had, we had an old building that's doing new apartments, and they had six that they finished, and they were rented within a few weeks. So there is a market for it, and this gentleman, they do studies before they get into all this. They do studies, so the developer believes that he's going to make money on this.
Thank you, Mr. Ketchum.
William Ketchum, precinct two. The more I listen to everyone talk about this building, and listen to what the selectmen have done, it's been a lot of hard work, it has struck me that we are going to give up ownership of a building that we're still standing in at the moment and intend to stand in in the future, in return for a lease back, but the lease back will cost us annual rent, and it will only run for a period of 40 years. Municipalities, unlike the private sector, do not live on short-term spans of time. We're here forever. If there is no other plan for locating our voting, our town meeting, and our Council on Aging and youth activities, other than this building, it enters my mind, why would we therefore sell this building? Wouldn't it be more sensible to invest in it as a public place? And if we have a building we might want to sell, the visitor's center, what we attempted to do with the old Council on Aging building, I'm not sure where that one went, but this body did improve the disposition of that building for housing. Why are we selling this? Yes, it'll be on the tax rolls for a fraction of its value, $50,000. I've come to see, what's the point in doing this?
Mr. Duval.
So the $50,000 just for the first year, it'll be much more, okay, we agree on that. It's always been the intention for the town to own this community, sorry, it would be ours, always been the intention up until recently, when Mr. Mackin indicated to us that for his, for him to be able to, to obtain finance from a bank, that he would need to own the entire building. So it was either we could sell him the entire building, and give him the gym and the auditorium, and forget the Council on Aging move, and just call it a day, which he would be fine with, or do we, as a community, want to keep the, this area, these areas we've already discussed many times, as a community center for the Town of Adams, which North Adams has their armory, right? Dalton has a great place for their youth to go to, and Lee built a brand-new one, they have the money to do that, but for Adams, we don't have anything, all right? So this, to me, will be for the community and the youth of our town, so I'd like to keep, I'd like to keep a hold of this, and just in case Plunkett ever does, the numbers do get low enough where they can bring everybody up to the high school, that that building is more attractive of a building that would sell as condos and things like that, more attractive than this building is. So it's really, it comes down to a matter, does Adams want a community center and have their Council on Aging over here to expand their programs, which they do support, so it's really, to me, it's an improvement to our community to have, to offer these services, and to compete with other communities, and be like other communities. They have it, we don't.
Yes, may I make a comment?
One second, because I did say Ms. Hines. Okay, go ahead.
This is in reference to Mr. Ketchum's statements. I look at this building, and I see something that has been mentioned that we do need. It's a downtown building, and it sure would make people going through our main room, making a more appealing entrance to our community. I don't believe that we have the ability to buy the building and to do the work necessary to put it out on market for us to be the overseers of this building. So I don't think there's a perfect solution for everything, and this, I believe, isn't perfect, but I do strongly believe that this is the best that we can do with this building, because the longer it stays idle, the more it deteriorates. So my thinking is that we have somebody interested in doing it, and I believe I have a good feel for people, and Mike Mackin comes to the meetings in work boots, and he's been in the business for a long time, he's very reputable, so I don't want to squander the possibility, because we still are in negotiations, of not allowing somebody to do something on this building, because I think the payback is more than just money, I think the payback is making our community more appealing to people when they come through the town, because you come through this town and you look at things, they've been the same for so long, and things can only change if you have people willing to do it, and as Chairman Duval mentioned, I don't believe anybody who's developing something will put the time and money into it if he doesn't think, or she doesn't think, that they're able to make something good out of it. So my thinking is that the longer we delay and try to find a perfect solution to this problem, I think it's time wasted.
Ms. Hines.
I'll be quick.
Okay.
Kathy Hines, precinct five. My question is, and it's pretty darn simple, it says here, 20 affordable apartment units. What do we mean by affordable? And that's a big concern for me. I'm doing, I'm finishing my residency, and I have an awful lot of patients and people, because I'm in psych, that are homeless, they're couch surfers. And what do you mean by affordable? We have a real problem because we don't have affordable. I don't call $2,000 a month affordable. So let's get some, I want to know some numbers here, this is just too broad for me. This is just too broad for me.
Sure, understood. Mr. Mackin has chosen to use the 40R program, which we approved, as told me several years ago. So with the number of twenty-five apartments, the minimum number, the minimum needs to be four affordable apartments.
Yeah, affordable, okay. What is your term for affordable? What are we talking in dollars here?
So the affordable units, which I think five are being proposed by Mr. Mackin, those will be reserved for anybody that makes between, anything less than eighty percent of the median income. So they would have to meet certain income requirements to be able to rent those apartments.
But only five?
There's only five that are, would be deed restricted affordable.
So the other twenty?
The twenty, the other twenty would be market rate.
So that still leaves an awful lot of people without housing.
Well, it depends on, I guess, the value of that market rate apartment. I'm not sure what the rent levels would be.
But that's a concern for me, and I would like it shared with the developer as well.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on this article? Seeing none, a motion is in order to approve the, did I always get one? Thank you. It's been a while. Oh, Rachel, it's her, thank you. Okay, this is going to be a standing vote count as well. We need a two-thirds approval for it to pass. All in favor, please stand. Thank you, may be seated. There were eighty-five yes votes, two no votes, the article carries. Article 6, special tax agreement to support the Adams Theater redevelopment, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Chapter 23A, Section 3E and 3F of the General Laws and any other law or authority pertaining thereto to approve a special tax assessment agreement, STA, between the town and the Adams Theater LLC and Adams Theater Presents, Inc. in substantially the same form as is on file with the town clerk for the property located at 27 Park Street, Adams, which STA provides for real estate tax exemptions over a ten-year period at the exemption rate set forth therein and be authorized the Board of Selectmen to execute the STA and any documents related thereto, and to approve its submission to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, EACC, of the STA project and any other applications, documents, or actions related thereto as may be necessary or appropriate to implement the project or take any other action in relation thereto. A motion is in order. Mrs. Moochie, seconded by Sarah Klein. Discussion.
I'm going to recuse myself from this. I was a donor to the theater, so I'm going to leave my seat, but I want to say personally that Enamore has certainly put a spark in this community, and when it comes to taxes, it's certainly a sticky subject, as we all know in this community. We're overburdened as it is, but I think we need something to bring people to our downtown, and I believe that allowing this will be advantageous.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Novak. Any questions or discussion? All right, this is a simple majority vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, thank you, the article passes. Article 7, this is authorization for revolving, revolving fund spending limits, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 43, Section 53E half, to establish limitations on expenditures from revolving funds established by Chapter 50 of the general bylaws entitled revolving funds, as follows, or to take any other action in relation thereto. In June, at the annual meeting, the town did approve and add a revolving fund called the Greylock Glen Revolving Fund. The proposed article has a fiscal year twenty-five expenditure limit of fifty thousand dollars. A motion would be in order. Mr. Burdick, seconded by Mrs. Bottler. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The article carries. Article 8, Greylock Glen Outdoor Center Solar Power Purchase Agreement, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a sublease agreement with a solar energy provider for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a ground-mounted parking lot canopy, solar vaultic system within the parking area surrounding the outdoor center building at the Greylock Glen located at Zero Field Road slash 135 Old Road in Adams, Massachusetts. Property ID 004/218.0-0000-0005.0. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a power purchase agreement with a solar energy provider for the energy produced by said system, and to enter into any other agreements as may be necessary in the Board's judgment to develop said system in said location. The land that will be subject to the sublease agreement is a portion of the premises leased to the town by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, acting by and through its division of capital assets management and maintenance and consultation with its Department of Conservation and Recreation, and described in that certain master lease dated October 17, 2014. The sublease agreement, the power purchase agreement and such other agreements shall be upon such terms and conditions as are in the Board's judgment and the best interests of the town, and shall be for a term of up to twenty-five years, and to authorize the Board, the select Board, to grant any easements necessary to allow the electric utility to install, maintain, operate, repair, reinstall, or replace any utilities required for interconnection to the solar facility, and/or to take any other action in relation thereto. A motion is in order to approve as written, Mr. Byros, seconded by Mr. Lennon. Discussion.
Yes, I just would like to make a quick comment. I, I'm all for solar, which we all should be for, for alternative energy sources, but I, I had a problem with where and how the efficiency of these solar panels will work. During the opening of the outdoor center, the architect stated, it might have been missed by people, that there was going to be solar on the building, and as you enter into the building, you have such a beautiful reveal for sun with a southern exposure, and although there'll be more panels, where they're going to be located, the way that they'll be situated and the tilt that they're at will not supply, I believe, as much energy as would have been less panels in a more advantageous location. And I think that it would have benefited our cap if we owned the solar, and we're getting the benefits from the solar. Now, we're having somebody do it, and they're going to be receiving the benefits of the solar energy that's produced.
Thank you. Without objection from the town meeting, Mr. Argeris Schmidt, would you like to address the town meeting? Sorry. Mr. Duvall. Could you sit up to a microphone, please?
Here?
Sure.
So I want to make sure that Joe's comments, if he has anything to respond to, that everything he says is correct, or is any modification needed?
No, the system is designed to cover one hundred percent of the estimated energy consumption of the outdoor center. The architect had an opportunity when initially designing the building to put more solar on the roof, so I agree with you, Mr. Novak, that it may have been a missed opportunity for the architect to design for one hundred percent of the solar, of the needs of the building with solar. But he decided that ultimately the solar should be put on the parking lot. So we were brought in to accommodate that, and put the design together. The intent was never for the town to own the solar, so when we were brought in, we were asked to take a look at possibly allowing the town to own the solar, but mostly focusing on this power purchase agreement option. We, as a company, offer both options, and it was advantageous for the town to not own the system. Costs about seven hundred thousand dollars to build. I think the way it's designed, it'll look great, it'll mirror the, the building itself, but not change the aesthetic of the building that the architect intended, which is beautiful. It mimics the mountain in the background. But ultimately, we'll be able to build the system at no cost to the town, provide one hundred percent of the energy that the outdoor center needs to become net zero, which is the intent, and, and save the town money, about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars over the life of the lease, twenty-five-year term.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Why then would you want to invest in it if you're saying the components of it are so that, you know, it's going to supply what we need? There must be something in it for your group.
Sure, under the terms that we have with power options, which the town is a member of, it's an energy-buying consortium that represents five hundred municipalities and school districts and state entities across the state, they procure energy for those members, commodity electricity, gas, as well as solar through procurement, to satisfy public procurement requirements. That's all been vetted by your special counsel. We select energy, we're the winners of that procurement, that solar procurement, and so, you know, ultimately, power options has oversight over what we do. We have an open book agreement with them. Because of the nature of the incentive programs in Massachusetts and all of the moving parts with making solar work, there's the federal incentive, the state incentive, all these different incentives that are part of it, and so, and that offset part of the construction You know, ultimately, we can't offer a single power purchase agreement rate or single purchase price or cost per watt for any given project, because they're all so different. There's different construction costs, different requirements for interconnection. This project, we're putting up a bunch of steel to raise the panels over the parking lot, which is much different than a rooftop system. So because of that, we have to offer an open book scenario. Power Options takes a look at our numbers and says, okay, you're allowed to make X amount of money, it's a very limited amount. That's how we won the RFP against eleven other companies, ten, ten other companies, eleven competed, us included. So we show our books to Power Options, and they allow us to make a certain amount of money, based on these federal tax credit we receive, the state incentive we receive, the construction project costs, so forth. Over twenty-five years, we make a certain rate of return, and, and that results in a certain power purchase agreement rate we can offer. So the power purchase agreement is offering a fixed rate for twenty-five years to the town for the energy from the system, and that's twenty-five cents per kilowatt hour. Currently, the outdoor center pays twenty-seven cents a kilowatt hour, just, just under, twenty-six point nine. And so immediately, the outdoor center would be saving two cents per kilowatt hour. And of course, that goes up over time as utility rates go up. So there's a benefit to the town, there's a benefit to us. To your point, you know, solar energy offers larger benefits in terms of reducing pollution and so forth. I think the, the number, I was just looking at it with Mike Wind, over, over the twenty-five year term of the, of the lease, that system will save one thousand nine hundred tons of carbon emissions. Pretty, pretty nice savings there, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Wait, oh wait, I'm sorry, this is another standing. Those in favor, please stand. The yes votes are eighty-nine, no, zero no votes, the article passes. The next article is a citizen's petition. Article 9 is to vote a home rule petition for special legislation to establish a Greylock Glen Commission by vote of the Board of Selectmen. There's a motion on the floor to waive the reading of Article 9 by Mrs. Bottler, seconded by Mrs. Moochie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, so, all right, this article is a citizen's petition, so the petitioner will have to hold the article, or make the motion, I'm sorry, to make the motion to approve, not to hold, to make the motion.
I vote to approve.
Mrs. Parsons made the motion to approve the article, seconded by Mr. Corgan. Discussion. Oh my goodness.
I want to say that I'm moved to Adams.
Got to get it lower.
Can you hear me now? Um, I've only lived here for two years. However, for years prior to my moving here, for years prior to my moving here, I hiked all over Mount Greylock. And in the, about the ten years prior, I enjoyed walking the Greylock Glen loop. I wanted to say that I became moved to, to bring a citizen's petition to the citizens of Adams. It was around the time of Election Day and shortly after the Greylock Glen opened, that I, I was moved to do that, because I was hearing that people were upset about the amount of money that taxpayers, Adams taxpayers, were spending on the outdoor center. So I want to say that I'm here speaking for the one hundred and forty-six residents of Adams who signed that petition. Not many of them, but some of them are town meeting members. And I want to say that what I heard was that people were irate at the amount of taxpayer money that's being spent at the Greylock Glen Outdoor Center, even now. outdoor center even now without any significant revenue returning to the town of Adams' coffers. A little bit of history. The purpose and mandate on the petition that people signed was for Graylock Commission to be included, to include persons experienced in sustainable development in recreational and environmental marketing so as to remove future financial responsibility and liability from Adams taxpayers. It's my understanding. Now, what we put forth was the 2019 article that passed to establish a town, not a town, a Graylock Glen Commission. It was passed unanimously in 2019. So we put that forward. It's my understanding that the former Community Development Director, Donna Season, engaged attorney DuBendorff to draw up that warrant in 2019 that carefully defends and protects the town's interests and actually gives power to the Select Board. Now I understand that our state, our current state representative, who was mayor of North Adams at the time that the Graylock Glen Commission was formed.
Massmoka.
Massmoka. Massmoka Commission was formed. And being a North Adams resident for most of my life and a taxpayer, property taxpayer for over 50 years, I can tell you that North Adams taxpayers never paid a cent for Massmoka. So what I understand now is that the state, our state legislator, John Barrett, and our governor has signed an economic development bond bill for $150,000 for startup funds for Graylock Glen Commission. My neighbor asks me, where is the revenue for Graylock Glen? What's coming to the town now? Another person said to me, why aren't we saving a lot of money and a lot of tourists up at the Graylock Glen Center? So I ask you to pass this warrant so that a dedicated body can actually be formed, not only one who has climate sustainability in their target, but also is available to bring outside money to the operation of future projects and liability to Graylock Glen. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corgan.
Yeah, I just have a very simple question.
Okay.
2019, this body unanimously voted to form this commission. We didn't vote to try to form a commission, and if you don't get that done, it's okay. I guess my question is, why didn't the powers to be form a commission?
I get website. I got a dual meeting here.
I can address some of it. In 2019, yes, Mr. Corgan, you are correct. It was June 24th of 2019 that the Glen Commission was approved by annual town meeting. On June 27th of 2019, the town sent a letter to then Senator Hines and Representative Barrett to take this up in the legislature. In May 4th of 2021, I personally testified on behalf of the town of Adams to the Joint Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Agriculture at the request of Senator Hines as he had put forward S. 559, an act establishing a Graylock Glen hearing. In February of 2022, the S. 559 was forwarded to Senate Ways and Means Committee. At the end of the session, it did not come out of the Senate Ways and Means Committee favorably. The feedback that we received was to add more substance to this commission as to who, how many, term limits, et cetera. At that same timeframe, as you might remember, the announcement for the Graylock Glen Outdoor Center came in July of 2021, and things were underway. In January of 2023, Representative Barrett filed HD.2142. When I looked at the language, it said it was under review by House Counsel. I called the state rep's office and was told that it would come back to the town to take a look at the language because the language was not posted. I have an email exchange to that extent. On June 15th of 2023, it was one week after town meeting. In 2023, we received word from Representative Barrett's office that this did not come out of the House Ways and Means Committee favorably. This was determined by the House Clerk that another town vote was required as more than two years had passed. That is why it has not been formed.
Okay. Wait, Garrett.
What is it? Garrett Wire, precinct four.
Can I hear you?
Is it off?
I didn't touch it. Okay. Garrett Wire, precinct one. Christine, that's a really clear, detailed, and coherent answer to a good question. Thank you. But since two years have elapsed and we all want a commission and it wasn't done, it doesn't matter anymore now who dropped the ball or why the ball was dropped. Let's just vote for it and thank Diane for getting this mobilized.
Thank you, Mr. Corgan.
Yeah, I just had one further question. And I can appreciate dealing with the state is difficult. However, it shouldn't take a citizen's petition to bring this back up again. I'm sorry. You guys dropped the ball.
Thank you. Mrs. Butler.
Michelle Butler, precinct one. So a question. If it was kicked out of Senate Ways and Means because it wasn't detailed enough, and it was kicked out of House Ways and Means because it wasn't detailed enough, why do any of us think that this will now get accepted when it's the same language that was filed in 2019 that has not been accepted by the legislature? It seems like we're running a fool's errand ticker.
Any other questions, comments? Yes.
Hello, Erin Melon, precinct five. I'm also very short. I did some research back into, I'd like to start by saying that I am very in favor of having a commission in general and in theory and eventually. I have some concerns with how this one is written. So I went back to the Massachusetts Acts of 1988, which were the ones that incorporated the commission for Massmoka, which this one is supposed to be modeled on. And there's some significant differences that concern me. The two that are the biggest concern to me that maybe either the petitioners or I don't know someone who was involved in practicing this language might be able to speak to. They both kind of boiled down to giving kind of an extraordinary amount of power and separating the commission from the town government in a way that's inconsistent with our other commissions and in a way that's inconsistent with how they did it in the Massmoka Commission, particularly in the changing of the tenancy. Rather than in the Massmoka one, for instance, the commission is authorized to act on behalf of the town, but the town, or the city, I suppose, in North Adams, it never changes hands who legally owns the lease. And then the other thing is the formation of a 501(c)(3). That was not in the 1988 Act in the Massmoka Commission. And it concerns me that this would substantially separate the commission from all of the other commissions in town, none of which incorporated as a 501(c)(3), and instead have terms and have appointment processes and things such as that. Whereas it seems like the 501(c)(3) organization once is formed, would take all of those decisions away from the town meeting members and away from the Select Board. And that's just a concern that I have. So I don't know if there's someone who could speak to those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Boy.
So a couple of, and this is why I raised my hand to speak to this. So I have a couple of issues with the language as it is being presented today. 2024 is very different from 2019 when this was put forward. In 2018, the work began to write this language. At that time, there was no building, there was no funding, and Donna Seaton was, I think, the first time telling us that she's retired. So this language was put together because we thought that the only way that we would be able to get money to realize the vision of the Graylock Glen was to do this as a fundraising measure. That is why the 501(c)(3) was put in there because we were told at the time, no one is going to write millions of dollars of checks to the town of Adams. Now, in 2024, there's not only a building that was built with public dollars. So I've been trying to rack my brain as to say, how do we tell the state, thank you so much, thank you, federal government, so much for this investment here in the town of Adams? We appreciate those public dollars that you spent to put in the water system and to put in a building. And now we're going to turn it over to a separate 501(c)(3). Thank you so much. I don't know how we, I don't know how we do that. I don't know how we turn that down. My other concern about the language here in putting forward a 501(c)(3) organization that would be in charge of contracts and personnel. We have two employees who are currently town employees. What happens to those town employees? They now become employees of a 501(c)(3) organization? I'm not sure that they stay. I'm not sure that that works. I'm also not sure about contracts. We are currently in active contract negotiations with a restaurant provider, with Mass Audubon, and a campground provider. I don't know how we continue to move forward with good faith in contract negotiations with these organizations if we are asking the state, please form a separate 501(c)(3) organization that now has ownership of all of the Glen and this building. We no longer want to have ownership of it, is what we are saying if we pass this. So the other thing that I would ask is for a little more time. And I understand the impatience. I do. This has been a very dynamic situation. We were not aware when that announcement came through in 2020 that we were going to have the funding to finally realize that vision of the Graylock Glen Outdoor Center is the first piece of development up at the Glen. So one of the things that I would ask is give some time for us to have conversations as a community to figure out what is the best structure? Is the best structure a commission? Or is it a district? Is it an authority? Is it an advisory board? There are very different ways that we can look at this and structure it. And I'm asking for time and a lot of conversation to figure out what that is. I'm also asking that as part of that, we look at how will this be funded? So yes, there's an economic development bond bill that has $150,000 that has to be released by the governor. We waited over 10 years for the state to release the money in a bond bill for that building to be built. We never thought it was going to happen. I'm not sure how long it takes for $150,000 to get released by the state for this to fund the commission. I will also point out that this town meeting body, back in June, approved expenditures for the Graylock Glen with the use of grants as well as operating and personnel expenses of $247,000 to open up that facility. So $150,000 doesn't cut it. That $247,000 does not include the insurance for that building, and it certainly does not include the legal fees for any of those contracts that are in negotiation right now. The last thing I want to say, because I know that there was a comment about there's no revenue coming in. The town had an, we had an option. The building finished completion in October. We can open the building and have a soft opening and allow people to walk through and see that this is a reality. Or we could have kept the building shuttered until the contracts were signed, the restaurant was open, and Mass Audubon was in there. There was a decision to have it open so that so many of you could be in there, see it. And we have welcomed visitors from all over the world. I have personally met families from Italy, from British Columbia. I have met a young woman from Spain. They're coming from Hawaii, California, Texas, and our neighboring states. They have found the building, the visitors are enjoying it, and our outdoor enthusiasts are also enjoying it. So my plea tonight is for town meeting to really think about this. Think about the language and how it could be detrimental and how it could actually shutter the building that is currently open right now because there's not enough funding on day one to kick off a commission.
Further discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cowley? Mr., I'm sorry. Mr. Novak first, then Mr. Cowley.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody. This is the first town meeting that I've gone to in a long time where the discussion has been frank, it's been back and forth. And I think that's very healthy for government and the people of Adams. But when it comes to the Glen, I have a prepared statement. And I, I can assure you that there's nobody on this board or even in this town that has paid more attention to all the iterations that have started at the Glen and have failed. It's been very, always has been very iffy. And so my prepared statement is as follows. The Berkshire Eagle, I believe, had a well-written and easy-to-understand editorial. And it said, "The burden is on those who oppose the creation of a Graylock Glen Commission." And so we heard from one individual of a Select Board who believes that we should wait, that we should wait. And as I assess the present situation, it is becoming clear to me that a personal power play is occurring between top Adams officials and Representative John Barrett. Past Eagle articles has brought this fact to the forefront. Comments made by town officials and our outgoing town administrator range from, "Now is not the time" in reference to the formation of the commission. We are not opposed to a commission. We want to set it up our way. We want to be able to define what we want the commission to look like. Leaders say we need to create bylaws, seek out a vision, who will be the commission members. In closing, the paragraph ends stating, "We've been so busy with the outdoor center, we haven't had the time to look at how this is going to be done." The commission would have the time to do it. That would be their job. And they would have the people necessary to oversee aspects that will be brought to fruition here. Also, other top town officials, and I'm not mentioning names. And so it's something that... And so, it's something that, it's, I don't know, I just don't seem like, when I talk and I say somebody's name, I'm out of order. Other top town officials claim the process, as lack of communication with Barrett was the biggest problem. It would be great if our state rep worked with us on this Glen commission. In a year's time, Barrett went down to the legislature and why it wasn't approved. And so, you know, you can see this back and forth. Is it healthy for the community? No, it is not. Right is right and wrong is wrong, and what's better for the community is better for the community. Rep. Barrett was, has countered by blaming the lack of communication on town government. Rep. Barrett states, "There is a philosophical divide." So it's time to, so now is time to decide the Greylock Glen commission fate. I have made it known that I strongly believe that the formation of a commission is paramount. The present operational plan of the outdoor center will not make this venture self-sustaining. It will fail. My reasoning is based on the overburden of our town's taxpayers. The gala opening, the outdoor center, was well orchestrated. However, as I stood on the sidelines during the celebration, my enthusiasm was tempered. The opening rang holler. The crowd dispersed and the magnificent building showed majestically along with the backdrop of Mount Greylock beckoning in the gleaming, sun-filled blue sky. There were no contracts yet signed. Audubon committed early. After many requests for a restaurant operator, an individual came forward just prior to the opening. When introduced to the select board, we were not told of his past financial situation. Having looked into the individual's business dealings, I found that he had filed for bankruptcy. After his property was auctioned off, the monies from the sale did not allow his debtors to be fully compensated. The board members were given documentation of this, of the court filings, which I passed out, and there were, the bankrupt reasons were many, and it was the local people in the community and all throughout. So the bankruptcy was very, very hurtful to so many people, even local concerns. And I was informed that the center's opening, that both the educational contract, when I asked, with Audubon and the kitchen operator, I was told it should be negotiated at the same time. I would contend contractual agreements for each lease would vary in scope and economic considerations. A Glen commission would have a member who better understood finances and contractual negotiations. The staff was hired. Two individuals were selected via selection committee. The executive director had a salary of $88,000, and a superintendent of building and grounds at $74,000. The initial base salary for the building and grounds position was earmarked at $61,000. Because the selected applicant was currently working as a town employee prior to his selection and having many years of service, he was earning $74,000. When I stated that, the base paid for the position at a combined finance and select board meeting was posted at $61,000, our town administrator couldn't remember off the top of his head on a salary range. I must admit, I did not believe him. Without working a day in this position, he was granted a $13,000 raise. Combined cost for the two employees equals approximately $162,000, and this is not including benefits that go along with the job. And these salaries are being paid by taxpayers. Being an upfront individual and speaking my mind, I think both positions presented, were presented as coronations. I felt that an interconnected fabric of personalities and friendships were determining factors during the selection process. The present executive director is an intelligent man, but does he have past, his past career bode well in a position?
Point of order on the floor, to the point of order.
Okay.
Sorry, Joe. I appreciate all of your comments. Carol Cusetti, precinct five.
But what does it have to do with forming the commission? You've gotten really personal here, and I think it's a little above and beyond.
Okay, thank you, referee.
Mr. Novak, unacceptable.
Okay, unacceptable. You know, I've been, excuse me, I've been shut down so many times, like you're out of order. I feel like a human vendettary.
Mr. Novak, are you going to finish your statement without personal, without involving personalities and names?
I haven't mentioned a name.
It's pretty obvious where you're going, Mr. Novak. Continue. Continue.
Okay, I will continue, okay? So, okay, so here we go. Intelligent, but well, grant-writing abilities were touted as a strong point on his resume. Have there been any grant submittals made to date? If a Glen commission was in place, the interview process would have been more thorough and geared toward an individual with management abilities and contractual?
Mr. Novak, I am going to bring you back to the point that was brought in the point of order. Are you bringing this to the article? Can you bring your comments to the article with respect to the commission?
Could you clarify that?
Simply, we are here to discuss the citizen's petition for the creation of a Greylock Glen commission. Make your comments to the creation of the Greylock Glen commission.
I would argue that I am making those.
I disagree. I disagree, and I will ask you to keep your comments to the creation of the commission.
Okay, okay. It is obvious that the commission created before the initial build-out of the Mass Mocha was done prior to the beginning of the project, okay? So Joseph Thompson was hired, a person with a cultural background, someone who could lead the way, and a commission was formed around him. And that, I think, was a shortfall in our commission, not forming the commission prior to it. And we were told that, by our town administrator, that the Mocha commission was started after, after the museum was up and running. It was untrue.
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there. Because, no, no, hold on. I just want to see, Mr. Cowley, you got a point of order? Or did Mr. Summer, no, Mr. Cowley got up with a point of order?
My point of order is this. I think his whole argument is that based on the current administration and the way the Glen is being run has been improper. Or maybe not improper, but it could have been done better if we had a commission. That's what I think he's doing, and he's laying down point by point by point where he thinks the town administrator and the select board have failed. And I think that's relevant to the issue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cowley. Mr. Summer also has a point of order. I see your hand over there, I'll get there.
I just want my, one quick comment. Everything that Joan said, the people here should have heard it, and the moderators have instilled it. He's laying out a perfect program, and a lot of us agree with every point that he made.
I respect your opinion, Mr. Summer. Over here.
Hello, Erin Mill, precinct five. I would just like to clarify, the amendment, or the, I'm sorry, the article as put forward does not in itself create the commission. It instead asks the town to send the same language that was sent in 2019 and 2023 to the Mass General Assembly for their approval, and if they approve it, will then create the commission. Correct? Yes.
All right, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. So there's a point of order to allow Mr. Novak to continue with his point by point. Is there objection? Mr. Novak, continue.
I think Jim Vassal raised the case. Is there an objection?
No objection, Mr. Vassal.
That's what you like, a good fight. I'm referring to something a little different. I'm referring to the Adams letter to the editor by Jerome Sokoloff. In this article, he says, "Why Adams should think twice on the Glen Comp Commission." Establishing a Greylock Glen commission at this time would require the town to cede a stunning amount of control. Joe should talk, but we should be able to talk too. I think if a commission was done at this time, it would cede our town. We would no longer be involved in it. We might as well be on the streets. You'd all be excited that you can get rid of one person or another while you can use your own personal vendettas in the past. But the end result is, the commission itself at this time will eliminate us.
May I ask, Mr. Vassal, when is the proper time?
I think the proper time is, is going to be decided by us. By you?
Yep.
By Mr. Dubois?
Yep.
By the rest of us? You know, there's other people here besides those that are interested in the commission.
I certainly agree with that.
Now, I never interfered with you, Joe. You don't have to intercede with me.
Fair enough.
Are you, Mr. Vassal?
I think the Greylock Glen is a bone to Adams, and the future created, creation of the Greylock Glen commission will assist the Glen meaning in its fullest potential. However, until the project is completed, creating the commission and handing off, handing off control will be a mistake that would cost the town years of work and progress. Along with Jerome Sokoloff, I urge the town meeting members to go no on the petition until we can go ahead with Senna and more complete attention.
Okay. Mr. Novak, I salute that. Thank you for yielding to Mr. Vassal, Mr. Novak.
Okay, I will continue, and thank you, Jim. Shortfalls in the lack of paid employees overseeing the runner, the running of, running of the outdoor center is troublesome to me. I wonder what type of liability the town assumes should something happen while a volunteer is staffing the premises. But I do want to thank those who have given themselves to man the center on weekends. The use of volunteers to oversee the building into the future does not, in my opinion, make good business sense. A permanent, constant schedule is needed so those planning to visit the center can be assured that it will be open. Lastly, the water tower that supplies water into the center building will come with a cost. The need for an operator and water testing company are mandated. Because so little water is being utilized, water dumps are necessary so that the water will not stagnate, leading to chance of bacterial contamination. The electrical makeup for the proper functioning of the components that serve the water tower, circuitry are comprised of high amperage output. Electric bills will be substantial. The use of the word nimble to react to unforeseen situations that were brought to light by our town administrator, top select board members, portends to me as causing more confusion and the tendency to, to create, to make it harder for potential developers. And the word nimble brings back to mind a child jingle and rhyme. And it was, "Jack be nimble, Jack be quick, Jack jump over the candlestick." And that goes back, way, way back in AD, that when first born, kids would jump over candlesticks. And it was that if you made it over the candlestick without snuffing out the fire, you were there, you had good fortune. And I put an analogy onto this poem, the way I really feel that things are going. It goes something like this. Some town officials think it, think to be nimble, that things will be fixed. However, I believe we've already tripped over the candlestick. In closing, I need to state that I feel deep inside concerning the overall health of our town government. I believe strongly that there has been a protective bubble created over the top tier of our town leaders, an alliance form of governing where a select few have become the voice of what they perceive is best for our community. I am not shy to admit my participation in conversations with the town has been limited on my own account. I feel that the pulse of Adams politics have led to a lack of transparency. Also, town finances, I believe, have been stretched to the maximum. My tenure as a select board member has and continues to be frustrating. Certain board members have continued to, certain board members have owned a gavel.
Mr. Novak, you're sliding out.
I stopped right there, and I just heard everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Dubois and Mr. Jett.
The creation of a Greylock commission, it can only be best for the town of Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Mr. Jett, and then Mr. Dubois, and then I saw a hand, and I can't see who it is.
Richard Jett, precinct one. A lot of the comments that Joe brought up, we can agree with, but a commission isn't going to solve those problems. I mean, if we're overpaying for staff and so on, that's a different story. A commission isn't going to help that whatsoever. I've been in this town a long time. In fact, you know, I was born here. And I go back, and I remember when we had a tramway commission. And that, and I can remember the governor landing up there on a helicopter and everything else, everybody saying, "Oh, it's a go, it's going to happen." Well, when's the last time anybody went up to Mount Greylock on the tramway? So a commission is not going to solve the problems that are brought up. And I agree, there's a lot of different approaches. There's, there's authorities, like we have a bus authority. You know, we have a regional planning commission. There's a lot of models that we need to look at before we just plunge into this. And what makes us think that we can send the same piece of legislation that was used several years ago that failed, didn't go anywhere? several years ago that failed, didn't go anywhere, and something's going to happen this time? Thank you.
Mr. Duval, it's been though in this order, because I see all the hands, so Mr. Duval, then Ginny, then Mr. Corgan, then Mr. Summer. Not yet, Mr. Cowley, because I got Ms. Hines behind you.
Okay, so about going to respond to Joe's comments and people can feel how they feel, like, you know, people say things, but, you know, there's 241, 2.4 million spent on the Glen. All right, well, this is what it is, you know, just throwing out there, seeing the sticks kind of thing, you know? There's accusations against the select board members, myself probably. I'm just here to, I'm just here to, to run a block for, to do the best for the town of Adams. That's all I'm there for. I don't take a stipend, all right? You know, I could be home like I can today, like most of you guys can, or your kids, but I do this to make this community a better place. It's the only reason I'm here, and I'll continue to do that as far as I go with that, with those kind of comments. And I'm always open for questions, anyone who wants to talk, I'm happy to talk to anyone. Currently, the town is, I met with John Barrett and Joe Thompson, Doc Sees and myself, prior to the first initial vote, and we decided at the time, prior to Jay Green coming here, that we would follow the Mass Moca Commission model, because that's all we had. So we said, we talked with President Barrett and Joe Thompson, we came up with some words from the council, and then we put those on the warrant real quick. No money to build the building yet, we were just trying to get you the process to get something, nothing was happening. And all of a sudden, bang, we got money eventually. So it's been through the state process, and it was, the dieting committee, and for us to think we're going to every submit the same wording, it's going to pass. The state legislature doesn't work like that. They want to see that, they want information, they want to ensure that everybody's supporting this, then they're going to support it. And that's what I've seen on other types of things we submitted. So currently, so the words mentioned the master lease. So the board of selectmen back in 2014, when I was on board, and Joe too, I believe, we signed the master lease with the state. And this is a document right here. This document describes that we are the tenant, the state owns that land, we pay a dollar a year to lease the little over 1,000 acres, and there's no mention of commissions in here. What it does have is the plan. The plan for the campground, where it's going, exactly where it's going to go, both sides of the road, for the Graylock Outdoor Center, for the Lodge Convention Center, and for the amphitheater, it's all drawn out in this agreement with the state. The state agreed to this, as we did too, and we signed off on it. So this is what we're operating to today. We're operating to a plan, and this is what the board is doing, and we're moving forward with this plan. You know, you hear some things, I would hold back 20 years, I would do this for 30 years, we used to fuck all the time, we had meetings at 12 o'clock and nothing was done. And we're making such good progress, the Graylock Outdoor Center is open, it's a beautiful building, and it's a great success, and people have got to start thinking that way, instead of, for the next generation, instead of my generation and previous generation always complaining about things and nothing getting done, like anything's done. And this is really for the next generation, because now they've got so much time to go. So this is what we're on as of today. All right, so we have a, we have a master lease. We're going to give up everything in this lease that we signed to the state will go to the, if this goes through, will go to a Graylock Glen Commission. So your select board's going to be taken out of it. And you can say, and the representative can say, that, well, the board will select, appoint the members, but if it goes, doesn't say that, and if it goes to the legislature, they can put what they want on it. Okay? We would hope they would, you know, they may say, it's going to be a 10-member board because that works for me and Kate God. I don't know what they're going to do. Right? So that's why I said in the paper, and I'll stand by that, that we need to submit what we want, and before they start to add to it and make amendments to it. So, and I just want to go over a couple of things, I won't take too much longer, but I just want to go over a couple of what's, some statements that were made in the paper by Representative Barrett. And I need my glasses, sorry. All right, so, and again, we've worked with Barrett for 10 years. I just, we started out with him, and we're there following the model. And I have the Moca, I have all the paperwork with every Moca agreement that was made, I've got it all here, and I've got this, someone else does the state legislation that was passed, and they have the word, a commission may be, may be developed. Our word says shall be, so all of a sudden, we're already putting ourselves into a position where we can't change anything, because the local one said may be generating the commission, ours says shall be. So now, again, we're putting ourselves in a position where we can't change that if we wanted to. I'll say we would, or we're putting these words to the state legislature that's tying us, that this body in the select board should be looking at before we submit the words. All right, just Mr. Barrett, just a few things here, and I'll just give a few words, what he had to say. And out of this middle, in so many words, will hopefully come a piece, will hopefully come a piece of legislation that will determine the establishment of the commission, the number of members, which I think that should be our decision, how long of a term of office, which Moca decided on that, they, I have the paperwork right here, we wouldn't have that, we wouldn't have that luxury. They did, we can't. All right, those are the words we're submitting. And the last thing is, and the governor should have an appointment. Okay, so there you go. Who do you think that appointment's going to be? All right? They're going to have the government, he's recommending that have a governor appoint someone from the government to be on this commission. Where's that coming from? That's not something we ever had discussed or thought of, or even here, but that's something in his mind that he's going to put on this as an amendment, that there's going to be a government official here. I thought it's our economic development project, it's Adams. It's not Massachusetts, it's not North Adams, it's Adams. It's our economic development project, the only one we have, and we got to take as much out of this as we can. And also, when we, when we go to a commission, and people think there's going to be all kinds of money, where's that coming from? Where's this money from the commission? The commission gets all of the money, goes to the commission. What does the town get? All right, nothing. Right? We get taxed, we get meals taxed and all that kind of thing, if they have a restaurant up there. What do we get? Right? We're heading, but right now, we're negotiating for leases with the campground, I don't want to get into their numbers, but we're going to get a percentage of the profits, we're going to get, I don't know, the 70 grand payment upfront, that's coming to you, to our coffers to help with our real estate tax problem. That's what I'm looking to do, is to control that tax, real estate tax rate, which all of us want to have, and there's nothing else that can help us. There's no Ford plan coming here, there's no, nothing's coming here, guys. So what do we do? We continue to pay more every year, to pay costs that go up every year, we need the economic development money to come into our coffers, and this is how we're going to do it, and we're negotiating that. The cafe's going to pay as part of their lease money upfront, we're going to get money from them as part of our lease. That's going to come to us. If we go to this commission, and in two months, they say, the committee is approved, this commission's approved, we walk away, the select board walks away. And where's all this money coming from now? They get it. It stays up on the hill. It stays with the commission. Okay, so I don't, I hear, all this money's coming our way to the town, and yes, it will if we continue the way we're going, and then have a good discussion on how we want to have this commission set up, and the right wording, and maybe a plan or something like that to provide to the state, so they can see all, everything we want, and then, you know, then they'll probably say, go for it, you know, everyone voted for it, agreed upon it, that's what they like to see. But going with this commission, this master lease goes to them, we have no say any longer. Maybe we can appoint, but according to our representative, not sure. I don't know what's going to happen, this goes into the legislature. That's a problem I have, let's say, if it was written right, and we agreed to it, and had everything we, in words, that we would like to go, our vision kind of, but not a big plan, but to submit this, and not tie us to so much that we're being tied to right now, you guys are going to lose all your, all your red blood, we're going to lose our red blood. The money's going to, all money, which the state says here, as a best motive, goes to the Glen Commission. So where is this economic development for the town of Adams to help pay with, which I'm hoping is going to us the burden of the homeowner paying real estate?
Wow, Virginia? Virginia Duval, precinct one. John, you may have answered a bit of my question, but I'd like to say first that I do believe that it's important to have some kind of group, whether it be a commission or whatever, in the long run, in order to take on the burden of planning going forward. And that I am somewhat disappointed that some of these issues were not addressed prior to the opening of the building, you know, so that caused people concern. But my most immediate question is, oh, and another concern I have, is the use of the same language previously, that has been denied two times by the legislature. So that brings me to my, what my actual question is. And I'm not certain what the immediate result of a vote to accept this tonight and to put through this act again. What's the immediate effect right now of that, in terms of the negotiations that the selectmen have going on now? I just, I'm just not certain about what happens. Does everything just sort of stop? Or does it go forward until this goes through the legislature? And I'd like to know what that would be.
So I can answer a little bit of that, if that's okay. And I know that our town council is present. And so the section three does say that the act shall take effect upon its passage, which does indicate passage of the legislature, not necessarily town meeting. And, attorney Blake, did I misrepresent our conversation about that matter?
Through you, Ms. Moderator.
Absolutely, and my apologies. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the new town council from Adams, from Copeland Page, Jeffrey Blake.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jeffrey Blake, and I just want to, if you could indulge me for just a second, I want to thank you for having me out here tonight. Madam vice chair, you did not misrepresent what I said. I will say, you've asked for the immediate effect. The immediate effect of passing this tonight is probably nothing. It will authorize the board of selectmen to file a petition. It will authorize that. It will not force them to, it will authorize them to. So with respect to a negotiation, the negotiation would continue on. I will say that the other side who's negotiating would see that this, there may be a change in ownership, so that may have a detrimental effect on a negotiating position of the town with respect to those particular contracts. But it's not effective until passed by the legislature. And, you know, judging by the track record, that may be a while.
But the language that's in here of this act is the language we're committing to, again.
Is that a question for me?
Yeah.
Through you, Ms. Moderator.
Absolutely.
That is the language that the board is being authorized to submit. That is correct. And again, I say it's authorized. The select board being the executive body of the town is authorized to submit it, but the legislative body can't order the executive to do anything. They can authorize them to, and then ultimately, they, it would be up to the select board whether or not they wanted to do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Corgan.
I think, I need to explain a little, little story to you that I had. I went to the workshop meeting before annual town meeting in June, and I had a couple of questions. There was one selectman in our town administrator was here, and I had some questions, all of the Graylock Glen. One question was, did you do a spreadsheet on revenue against expense? No. Second question, I said, how long are we going to have to put a quarter million dollars into the Graylock Glen to sustain it? I don't, we don't know. Okay? Another question I asked was, how much rent are we going to get from Audubon? We don't know. Don't know. And one of the people there said, we're not developers, we're really doing the best we can. If that doesn't tell you there's a reason for a Graylock Glen Commission, I don't know what ducks.
Thank you. Mr. Summer, you were next.
I think if the vote is in the positive tonight, the select board does submit this, there will be some hearings, I understand, by the legislature after that, where, as Chairman Duval said, a decision can be made on how many members will form the commission. And there's no prohibition of people from the town of Adams being on the commission. There's been a suggestion that maybe one member would be appointed by the governor, maybe that makes some sense, so we have contact with the governor, she knows what's happening here, it might be to our advantage. All we're saying, and the select board has pretty much admitted, they don't have the expertise to negotiate contracts, to advertise and everything. The town administrator has left, and his mantra always was, we shouldn't change now because we're negotiating with people, and they're going to negotiate directly with the town rather than an association. Well, he's gone now, the main negotiator's gone, we almost have to start again. This is an appropriate time, I would think, for the select board to pass this on, to get the commission set up, so that they have the time to direct their attention to the town of Adams, which needs as much attention, if not more, than this Graylock Glen.
Thank you. Ms. Hines?
I might be a little more worried this time. First of all, I think a commission, a committee to help oversight, to oversee, is number one. I think that's a priority, and I don't see anything negative. And if we're thinking about people that can be on the committee, a lot of your big nonprofits have an oversight committee, what they call a board, okay? On that board, there's a number of people, each with their own field of expertise. There's finance, there's law, there's medicine, there's contract, there's fundraisers. These are your multimillion dollar nonprofit companies, okay? St. Jude Hospital, your humane societies. Nobody's saying that you can't have a member from the select board to be on this committee. That would probably be a good move, to have a member of the select board to be on the committee. Yes, and again, somebody that the governor appoints, because you want to have a direct line going right to Boston. All right, all that. But if you don't have an expert working in writing a grant, doing a contract, you're not going to get that money. Nobody who runs a nonprofit does not have a grant writer. And we've already spent a lot of money. If I'm not mistaken, I could be wrong, but I thought, you know, with the American Rescue Plan, we were given something like 2.3 million dollars to help after COVID, because everybody was financially devastated. I hope that's the correct number, 2.3 million in federal American Rescue Plan, all right? The Glen got 1.8 million. We got a half a million to do stuff that should have been done in town. Hello, Graylock Glen. You know, and we only got a half a million out of that to take care of infrastructure and roads and stuff like that, and that was all money given because And that was all money given because of COVID? So where did that, okay, that's one problem I see. And I think the committee could be, if we had a committee, the committee can oversee things. Nobody wants to be a dictator. Nobody wants to be 100% in control. And nobody can know everything about everything. A lawyer does their lawyer thing. A medical person does their medical thing. Your veterinarian is going to do the animal thing. The epidemiologist is going to do the epidemiology. The landscaper is going to do the landscaping. I mean, that's what the whole idea of having a committee is all about. And you can have people from town, but it's the whole idea of getting the experts to make sure you're getting a lot of bang for your buck and things are being done correctly. Then you have a public relations person that's going to get the word out there. So there's transparency. Because without transparency, people start gossiping in the back. And what happens there? You see stuff on Facebook that's not even factual, all right? So transparency is key. And last but not least, you know, we in Adams as taxpayers, we cannot afford to keep paying for all kinds of things and not getting any return on our money. We just can't. And I could go on and on, but I explained how a good nonprofit works. And there's nothing wrong with the Graylock Glen becoming a 501(c)(3). Nothing at all. That's not taking anything negative from the town board, the town governors of the town, the selectmen and the manager. One of those folks can be on the committee, and I'm sure it would be great. And they can go back and report back to their people. All right? I mean, I get a little worried. And Joe made a good point about the water. When water stays stagnant, that's when you get bacteria. That's why when the schools are closed for a couple weeks, three weeks, you have to really flush the water. You have to run the water for a significant amount of time to get rid of all that potential stagnating water that might have bacteria in it before you can start drinking it. So it's potable, not non-potable. And yeah, that's a military term. I'm old military. But yes, so I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cowing, do you still want to speak? Because Mr. Duval's got stuff back here. You're happy? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just one more thing. Yeah, I don't know if you want to get into who would be on this committee. That's something that's going to be down the road. Just quickly, I'll name who was on the first Moca commission. The Williams College president, Francis Oakley, I think his name is, Thomas Prez, director of Williams College Museum of Art, Mayor Francher, president of Battery Park City Authority, Carmen Giserneta, whatever it is, director of National Exhibitions, Ministry of Culture from Madrid, Spain, Lauren Rosenthal, Secretary of Exhibitions from London, and David Ross, director of Institute of Contemporary Art from Boston. All right, there's your first commission to Mass Moca. Okay, so we got to stay away from deciding who's going to be on this commission. That's a long way off. I'll just say one more time. Think, just take it in mind, think bigger, okay? The Graylock, we create that Graylock Glen commission with, that all the authority is, not the authority, but all decision-making, everything else is taken away from the board of selectmen who are elected by the citizens of this town. All of you, along with revenue, say, you guys have supported us and made great decisions over the years to get us to this point. And we're making great progress here. And all this money, somebody, you know, this money we're going to get, we don't get it. The money goes to the Graylock Glen Commission to ensure there's a future for the Graylock Glen and to work, you know, the investments they want to make. And that's great. And that's what the investment we want to be. But my thought had been always coming into this, and I said it the last time meeting, that I would like to see that Adams benefit from its own economic development project, that we get something out of this. And we're going to get to that point very soon when we sign these agreements and get through all this negotiations. You're going to start seeing money coming into our coffers. But if the commission starts as the words are state now, then it's the commission's money. So why are we doing this?
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion, questions? Okay, I've got Ms. Parsons, oh, Mr. Laura, I made you wait. So hold on, it's going to be Mr. Laura, Ms. Parsons. Yultra, is that you? Okay. I got you guys.
Good, Laura, precinct one. Just one question to the citizens that are responsible for this petition is, did Representative Barrett review and endorse the language in this petition? Both Representative Barrett and Senator Mark, because they obviously both have influence. Was that connected? Did he endorse this language?
The question is, did Representative Barrett or Senator Mark endorse the language in your?
Actually, I went to see.
Ms. Parsons, just pop up.
I practiced the Representative Mark's representative at town hall the day he was scheduled to be there. Couldn't find him, but yes, John Barrett did endorse the language.
So he, you're due to endorse all this language?
He endorsed it. And he was, just on Mr. Duval's question, he was the initial chair of the commission. John Barrett was as mayor of North Adams.
Okay.
And I've been a member of Mass Moca ever since it opened.
So did he endorse it, just verbally? He just told you he endorsed this? Or he sent you an email?
He saw, he saw, and yes, he endorsed it.
Okay, so it's fair to say that Representative Barrett saw the language, saw the article?
He said, "Thank you."
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Laura, anything else?
No, I'm not sure that's precise enough. I understand that Representative Barrett has made many statements about forming a commission. But, I mean, with all due respect, I'm not sure that he actually sat down and read this my line and said.
Yes, he did. In my house.
In your house, he saw this, he had.
Other people here were present.
Okay, discussion up here. Focus here.
Yeah, I think that was a point I wanted to clarify, that he actually reviewed this material. He shared this endorsement with some citizens of Adams. I would ask if he shared that endorsement of this petition with any member of the select board?
Not us.
The answer to that is no.
I'll speak for ourselves.
I know, it's a worry.
No, you know, it's just a fair question. And again, it reiterates my concern that there's a communication breakdown between Representative Barrett and Senator Mark and our select board, right? If this motion for some reason doesn't pass, then that needs to be addressed, right? I just say that as a citizen, to say that whenever, if there's barriers that exist, you know, those conversations absolutely need to continue. The common ground has to be determined and where you agree, where you disagree, and bring that information back to the next, you know, town meeting or other appropriate venue to say, okay, this is where we agree, this is where we disagree. Where's the common ground? You know, it's unfortunate that, obviously, Representative Barrett couldn't be here to share his opinion on this matter, that he couldn't even share his endorsement with our select board, which is, local and state government must communicate with each other to govern. That did not occur. So that is a concern for me, to say, you know, to vote for something where our local and state representatives are not on the same page. They're not talking to each other. They're not endorsing this is just a concern to me that I want to express to the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm having a senior moment. Who did I say would go?
Ms. Hines.
Okay, down.
I just want to say this, that I asked John Barrett to come to this meeting, and he said it's not appropriate. He's not a resident of Adams. And the other thing that I wanted to say in response to Mr. Duval again, because he mentioned all the high-level people who were on the initial commission. And I want to tell you that I've talked to a lot of people here, and anybody who would listen to me, that I would like to see Melinda Gates from the Gates Foundation as a member of the commission, or at least considered contacted. And by the way, I gave John Barrett her contact information, and I contacted the Gates Foundation myself.
Thank you. Mrs. Wiltchaffey.
Juliette Wiltchaffey, precinct three. Just as a point of clarification, from what I heard, Ms. Hoyt, when you did the timeline, that the initial submission in 2019 was denied for not being comprehensive enough. Saying was submitted in '23, and it was again rejected. A citizen petition that's coming up, what I think I'm hearing from most of the members of the board is that it's not in the town's best interest because it's not involving enough input from the board. So is there a reason why, after those two rejections, that the application for a commission wasn't modified to make it viable and to include the interests of the town that I hear you feel may be lost if this goes through now?
I can speak to my opinion and why I didn't take this up personally as a member of the select board. Again, we were notified a week after the 2023 annual town meeting that it had failed. So we had missed the 2023 annual town meeting. And so, yes, we could have brought it forward to the June 2024 annual town meeting. However, we were in the process of constructing the building and trying, and we had a couple of contracts that we were starting to look at, and the situation was much more dynamic than I think any of us had anticipated. I can tell you, from my perspective, I didn't have the capacity to do all of the research on my own and bring this forward. And I'm not sure that the timing was correct at that point. What I'd like to do is to be able to spend some time now and figure out what type of structure, how many people, what kind of term limits, et cetera, and bring something with more substance back to town meeting for there to be more of a discussion and a vote at that time.
So respectfully, what your answer is saying to me, perhaps not directly, is that this is an overwhelming task and that the board has on its plate so much that it may be beneficial to look at a broader input that may come from the commission.
Yes, and I would agree. But in the interest of finding a group that could take this on and have the capacity to take that on, I don't want to shortchange the town of Adams, and I don't want to hastily put something forward that I think does that. I feel like this language is detrimental to what we have up there right now. And I'm asking for time to reconsider what that kind of structure and what kind of body would be responsible.
Yeah, I'd like to comment.
Okay, Mr. Novak, I'll let you comment, but I also have a town meeting member with a hand. Mrs. Whitman, you wanted to say something?
Mary Whitman, precinct five. I've been researching while we've all been talking because Michael DePacas was our governor in 1985. He was also a very personal friend of our family. When Mike was here, he made a bond to oversee Graylock Glen for 8.5 million dollars. He gave that money to the Department of Environmental Management to hold. And governor, 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 frittered it all away. And the title of the article was, "Adams Wants More Than To Mow Lawns At Graylock Glen." So through the different governors, who thought this is null and void, just a little teeny tiny town. Who cares about us? Phil gave it all away on consultants, science people, the birds, the bees, whatever you want, and they weeded it all down. And I don't like was here, I want to say five, maybe six years ago. And he couldn't believe that the bond that he had signed was down to nothing. And he said to all of us, there'll be X amount of money left in the account. I don't remember. John Barrett's a lifelong friend, too. John's not the hero that saved the money. Representative Neal is not the person that saved the money. And yes, we have a beautiful establishment up there. We've been working on it forever. But our money was taken away from us by the Department of Environmental Management letting all these studies and letting all these things go and just weeding away our money. I believe, yes, we need somebody to help us. But if we already gave it to the Department of Environmental Energy and they weeded it all away, I'm not going to say that if we have a commission and they're going to do the same thing. But I really think we need to look at a big picture and maybe not vote on this tonight. Table it. Get together with the select board and the people that, you know, have written the petition and say, how can we work together? We already have 8.5 million dollars down to nothing. And to set ourselves up again with not enough information or with enough information, but as Coach Fassell said, the right hand's not talking to the left hand. Let's just smile, let's shake hands and say, how can we move forward in a positive way? I think that's what we should be doing. And only because I've been going through this whole thing, making sure I'm saying the right thing and I'm quoting the right thing. But the last person who wrote the last paragraph written by Mary Carey said, "It's such a sweet little town. You kind of expect to see Jimmy Stewart on the corner." But he adds, "And well-meaning townspeople have times succumbed to the silver bullet mentality that believe that a casino or a baseball stadium or a ticket to economic prosperity, people fixated on one thing, that silver bullet doesn't work." So I'm asking all of us as town meeting members, maybe we do need to come back, but maybe you all need, as our select board, to talk with people that have set this up and say, how can we work together as a team? Then I think, like Coach said, we're all going to leave shaking one other's hands, and we're going to have a new vision. So that's my statement.
Mr. Novak, you have a good point.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something with the timeline that was asked by Julie. The last filing was done by Senator Adam Hines, and he introduced it on July 31st, the last day of the session, the Senate session. So it was never brought to the floor because it was, and the language was vague. And the language, as I understand it, when Representative Barrett filed it, there was no new add-on to the wording of what was passed on. He wanted it left up to us to put the wording in the way that we thought it to be appropriate. Because the first two times that it was put into the legislature, it wasn't done properly as far as wording and the needed material to move forward with it.
I have a copy of the filing and Senate docket number and when it was filed. And I also have the information about the Joint Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Agriculture to talk about the, what Senator Hines had filed with enough time and was put part of that legislature. And I will also state that I was the only person who commented on the Graylock Glen commission. I was the only one who testified. Our senator didn't testify. Our state rep didn't testify. And none of the people who signed the citizen's petition testified. It was via Zoom, and it was on May 4th, 2021. It was via Zoom, and it was on May 4th, 2021. So if anyone would like a copy of all of those documents from the Senate, I do have them all printed here.
Mr. Wagner?
Can I call a question?
Okay. I have a motion to call the question, which means discussion ends. Second, we've got enough seconds. All in favor of the call of question?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
There, yes.
It's a two-thirds vote.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry. So it's a two-thirds vote on whether to call the question. So all in favor of calling the question? Stand up. Those opposed to calling the question? I've got two over here.
For not calling the question.
For not calling the question. Which means putting it to, okay, thank you. One, two, three, four. Okay, so 85 yeses, four noes, we move on. There's a motion on the floor from the petitioner with a second to move the article. Where is it? Down here, I want to get it. As printed on the warrant. All in favor of the article as written? All opposed?
No.
No's habit. This article fails. Point of clarification, we called, there was a call to call the question, we called the question, we had the vote to call the question. We go back to the article, which is what I said, there was a motion on the floor and a second to prove the article as written. I called for the vote. All in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The rule of the chair is it fails? The article fails. Article 10, no need to start clapping, people. Article 10 is to transact any other business that may legally come before the town meeting, anything? Motion to dissolve this special town being named Misses Muji, seconded by Mr. Mack, non-debatable, all in favor? Opposed? Good night.